Alderman Helly.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Selly.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman West. Here's the former president, Mayor.
Next on the agenda is our invocation and Lita Holling will lead us on that tonight. That'll be followed by the pledge leaders from Alderman West.
Lord God, we just thank you for this day, Lord, and we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening for our elected officials to listen and hear the issues that are on the agenda this evening, Lord. I pray that you give them wisdom, Lord, and understanding, and guide them in the decisions that are going to be made this evening, Lord. Father, I just want to, my heart goes out to those with loved ones that are ill or have recently lost friends. Lord, I pray that you would be with those family members, God. I pray that you would comfort them and that you would keep them, and thank you that your peace passes all understanding, Lord. And Father, we just thank you again for this opportunity and for your protection over us, Lord. And in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions to the agenda this evening?
The mayor.
Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to proclamation. Seeing no proclamations, we'll move on to citizens' participation. We ask that citizens who wish to address the board step forth to the podium and microphone and please give your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Dennis Strout, 349 440 highways, where the business is at. I guess I've been getting a lot of phone calls on what you guys did Thursday night. I'm wanting some clarification. Come August 1st, how does it affect the car track, the motorcycle track, the sand drag in the football field? Does it shut all of them down, or what's it do?
On October 1st?
Correct.
I think, Jim, do you want to, I mean, my understanding is that it will if we don't have anything in place, correct? Because I mean, I don't know about the football fields, I don't know, but...
Football fields are a separate issue.
I thought they were under the condition of use permit, the property was.
No, they're not.
You're, okay, that's, I was told they were. The entire property was, the legal description included the football field.
Okay. With respect to the sandrags and motocross, we have to determine if either is grandfathered. I thought, as I was told, that the sandrags are grandfathered as a pre-existing non-proprietary use. I don't know about motocross.
Do you know the date of the motocross? We were just talking about the date.
No, I'd have to do some research. So, no matter what happens, the sandrag can continue to race all they want, make all the noise they want, and there's nothing you can do about it. Is that my understanding?
No.
Then explain it to me. If they're not part of, so, okay.
Well, they're still going to have to, if they create a nuisance, they're still going to be subject to regulation. They're not, they're not part of the conditional use permit because their use pre-existed this only. So, they had a use that was not deformed and they've continued that use.
So, if they're over sixty-five decibels, they will be cited, is that...
They will be cited for sixty-five decibels. They'll be cited for nuisance.
Okay.
It's a separate, it's a separate code violation.
Okay, and you don't know if the mo, I guess...
Yeah, we didn't know the date. We're thinking, I was talking to Grant, we think that the motocross might be also, so we're thinking it may be okay. It not affected at all. But we can get the date. I mean, because it's prior to 2003, correct, it's grandfathered in.
Zoning was ninety-seven when the motocross started.
I'd have to look, but it's in the mid-nineties. I mean, I have to go back and look.
So, it may be okay. We may not even need to do a conditional use permit for it.
And the football field is definitely, the legal description does not include the football field.
It may include the football field's use, but they're not subject to the conditional use permit.
Because they're public.
They're public, they're not subject. The only way a conditional use permit applies is if they're zoning. There's no zoning that applies to schools.
Yeah, and I got that, you'd asked that information.
The school owned the football field?
Public.
Well, who owns the football field? I guess my question is...
The city does, but since the city owns it, it's your public, and I told you I'd get that information to you. It, they got a form, I was going to put it up later, but Normandy School District versus City of Pasadena Hills, that case said that if it's a public, if it's public property for public use, then they're not, they don't fall under, under zoning codes. And that's why, like, the band and the football field at the high school and the football field down there doesn't fall...
Zoning and the nuisance is, I guess, I'm not an attorney, so, I understand the zoning issue, but not the nuisance, I guess.
Yeah.
Because I called the state and they didn't know anything about him being exempt from any nuisance laws.
Yeah. I mean, is that how that applies to, to like the band and the highest football field in our football field about the nuisance part?
They're always separate issues. They're not apples and apples.
So, they can make all the noise they want and nobody can file a nuisance complaint against them, they're exempt. I guess I'm just looking for clarification. I'm just, I'm not trying to start any...
I don't need clarification on anything that is not that difficult to understand. If there's a nuisance created by any noise, anybody can file a complaint at any time.
Okay, and the schools aren't exempt?
Pardon?
The schools are not exempt. Because they kept saying the schools are exempt from any nuisance laws, and that was the clarification I asked you for. I've found nothing that says they're exempt.
Now, what's the purpose of your question? Why are you worried?
Well, because the city keeps saying that they're exempt, and the sandrags, I'm assuming, has been there for twenty-five years, can continue to make as much noise as they want, and the school...
I don't know that. I don't know anything about that. We're not, they're in the conditional use permit though. The sandrags is, the property is in the conditional use permit of the sandrags. They're in the same geographic area. They're not subject to the conditional use permit. Because they were pre-existed to zoning, they're not subject to the conditional use permit.
Okay, so, they're...
They're included in the legal description, but it doesn't apply to them because they were there before that was passed.
Correct.
No state law that exempts the schools from, it's just, if somebody wants to file a nuisance.
Let me ask you this, Jim. Could somebody file, the band is keeping them up, could somebody file a nuisance complaint against the band?
Anybody can file a nuisance complaint or anything.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else supposed to address the board?
I don't need that. Nancy Totten, 309 Front Street. I would like to say thank you, Mayor, for going. Scott, I saw you out by the Saturday night. I don't know about the mayor, but I had a heck of a good time running around in the Humvee on the racetrack. And I do want to thank Zach and Jeff for helping with the food pantry we went through. I've been sorting them out so that when I go deliver the stuff, that I got equal vegetables for each pantry that I'm giving to. But they did an excellent job, and I did have fun. Like I said, I don't think they would throw anything at you, though, Mike.
I do.
We're good people.
Thank you. Anyone else supposed to address the board? Okay. Mr. Strout, could you see about getting that, if you had that date for when the motocross opened down there, that would help us out a lot. Did you get that to us? That would help us out a lot with that one?
I don't know if I'm going to have anything like...
For sure, but...
I mean, I can tell you, when I think it was, and I'm from a standpoint of a document, I don't know that there's...
Okay.
Actually, the city, not the city, the park board called me and requested that we build that motocross. That motocross was built as a request of park.
I wonder if that's in the minutes, then. We might go back to the minutes, maybe.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see what I can find, but I don't know if I can hit it, just any document dates on this.
Yes, there's nothing in minutes that we found. Maybe there's something...
In the park board minutes?
Well, we can, but that, that happened through the board.
Oh, fair board.
The fair, whenever they, whenever they had all, in fact, the fair board owned that park.
Yeah, okay, we might go and contact somebody on there and see if they...
If it was approved by the city, it would have had it on through the board at some point. Even if it was through the park board, they would...
Okay, we'll contact people on the fair board. I know, they may have something then.
Check with CJ, she probably knows.
Okay.
CJ, CJ or Sharon.
Yeah, one of them will probably know for sure.
Or Bill.
Yeah, or Bill, yeah, somebody will know. We'll check with them and see if they can give us a date, and that'd be great. Okay. Move on to the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I request from Alderman Scotty to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Arnold. Any discussion? Seeing none on the fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item is a presentation. It's a second quarter 2014 economic development update from Developers Marketing Group.
Hello, thank you very much for allowing us to be here again. You all have met Krista. I think she's been here with us before, but we appreciate the opportunity to work with Green Valley. And we're going to run through it kind of quick. I saw Alderman Schaefer down at Casey's, and he told me he wanted to be home for the Home Run Derby that starts here in about an hour. So, we're going to, we're continuing to work through our plan as we presented it to you, but just a few of the updates as we run down through it kind of give you some of the scoop on what's going on, on some of the projects as far as we know it. You've seen by now that Mag Trucks is up and operating, and they've got a number of their trucks out on site, including the Z-Man, I think, has been up there. I saw it the other day, that they did for Oklahoma Joe's. Couple of other companies are retailers, restaurants that are coming. Cheesesteak, I think you all have heard about that. A Weigel Law Office, Valley Roasters Chicken is coming August 1st. A CPA from Odessa is coming into the main center down the street here. Casey's opened April 30th. The Pickle Company, which you've heard me talk about before, is still contemplating what location they want to go to, but that kind of changed recently with the barbecue restaurant moving to Oak Grove. And I think that's really where they want to be, so they are negotiating now for a lease there. And they're an upscale pickle manufacturing operation that sells, and they'll also do retail out of the store there. But they sell in some of the, oh, the shops where you can buy Kansas City stuff, Missouri stuff around town. So, it's kind of an interesting, unique deal for Green Valley. And O'Reilly's is getting real close to open. I was just down there taking some pictures to put up on our Facebook page, but that seems to be going well, is going well also. The, a new lead that just came in, the, I talked with the owner of the Brass Armadillo down in Texas yesterday, and they are considering a, not sure what yet, but they want to do something on the vacant land next to them. So, the lead actually came from Alan Lefkow at Green Valley Bank, who has worked with them. So, we're going to talk about what the possibility, whether it's an expansion for them, or it's bringing in a separate business next to them. The northwest corner here, we just, there's been two developers that have been looking at buying that and negotiating with the bank that owns it. And it appears now that, and this is just as of yesterday, that the bank is going to demolish, they're not going to renew the lease for McChop, and they're going to demolish that. And they think that, and I agree with them, that the ground is worth more without that there, and it was a impediment to selling it because whoever bought it was most likely going to have to demo that. So, it appears that the bank is going to do that, retain ownership, and then try to sell it as a cleaned off site for future development. Now, one of the developers that I've talked to and worked with was envisioning a new convenience store there, a fast food taco place, and some other strip center type thing. The other developer we worked with now for over two years, just won't tell us what he's thinking about and, or who he's got in his back pocket, if he has someone. So, we'll continue to follow that and keep you updated, but I think that's a positive sign that a clean, nice corner there is going to help us. The northeast corner, and I know that Alexa keeps you updated on what's going on with that, but some of the things that we're doing is, we continue to talk to the bigger boxes. We know that once we get a box in there, the rest of it will fall into place. And the challenge is, is what that box is going to be, and it has to be something that's not already at Adams Dairy or Independence, the Independence Center area there. So, we continue to market to those that we've identified. For example, Menards is still in play out there. It's not ideal for them, but I see them all the time. I talked to the guy, Rick Nuttlem, saw him out at ICSC Las Vegas. We keep hammering on him, and if something like that could come in there, then we finish off that, that whole development. But in the meantime, we're trying to help the developer with some financial assistance, SBA loans. He's applied for. We have a friend that's in that business, that Heartland, Heartland Finance, and then also US Bank is one of the most aggressive banks in the area for doing SBA loans and maybe going farther than others would. So, we've gotten them all together that, so, potentially that could help him at least hang on for a little bit longer to, because I think he knows that he just needs one hit and everybody's good. We all know, we talked about that in our advisory, ED Advisory Board the other day. It's just, when is that going to hit? So, we continue working on that and trying to help in other ways. Besides, we've got a big box that we've been working for almost a year and a half, trying to make it work for them and trying to get them to make a decision to go forward with it. But I think that's still wishful thinking. The school district, and I don't really know what to call this, it's the school district transportation facility frontage. What most people might call the bus, where the bus barn was going to go for the school across, down on Southwest Eagles Parkway. We were able to convince them or help some of the school board members realize that that frontage was really a valuable piece of property and needs to be retailed. So, the inner workings of the school board got that to happen. We were given a map, the city staff did for me right before I went out to ICSC in Las Vegas. So, we've been marketing to all the Kansas City brokerage, retail brokerage community and developers, that that frontage could be a retail strip center. So, we continue to work with that and keep sending that out, and I know they're on a tight timeframe and are really pushing us to get that done, otherwise it could go back to what their original plans. The Main Street Retail, we work with and keep in touch with Dave Meyer and Christina Forsey on who they're working with, who we're talking to. We saw them out in Las Vegas at the International Council of Shopping Centers. So, unfortunately, there's nothing new to report there, but we are working on it. The, the last, or the last two, one just came in today, and it's, this has been one of the biggest challenges for us, is a large employee manufacturing operation. And we got a lead just this morning from the Kansas City Area Development Council for a food processing company that's looking for a hundred to two hundred thousand square feet, about a hundred and twenty jobs, and it's a meat processing. It's not a, it's not a dirty, it's a clean, a newer, upscale meat processing. And we've been unable to, the wards have told us that they were going to build a hundred thousand square foot spec building that could go up to about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So, I sent this over to them first thing this morning, this lead. It's got to be, we have to return a submittal by Thursday. They wanted an existing building, but I'm going to submit this one anyway because there aren't that many buildings like that available. So, we'll see what happens. I've been unable to get drawings or artwork or, or just layouts of what the building would be yet. And without that, I can't turn anything in. So, I'm staying on Dave to try to get that by Thursday because I think that would be a good fit for Green Valley. Then we also are still going after healthcare operations. There's obviously a need here in Green Valley, and we understand that another doctor is going to be leaving town, and so there's a lot of folks without service here, and that's one of our targets. Now, on to two other more general marketing topics. I mentioned the International Council of Shopping Centers Conference. Krista and I both went to that back in May. It was one of the larger ones in recent memory, actually going back to about when I first started going thirteen years ago, about thirty-five thousand folks in the retail development industry. And there was a huge contingent from Kansas City there. We went to several events where it's amazing how some of these brokers that you'll talk, you'll send emails to, you'll communicate by email or phone, but you never see them until you go out to Las Vegas. And that happened a lot. And we had a great trip. We made a lot of good contacts, and a lot of, the key to that is the follow-up that comes afterwards. And we don't take stuff out there, anything out for them to throw away. It's what happens afterwards. And so, still, you know, even today, I'm still making up follow-up calls from people we met out there. The Kansas City Area Development Council, as I always talk about, is a key relationship for us. And July 24th, that's next, a week from this Thursday, they've got ten real high-profile consultants coming into town. We're doing a, they're calling a barbecue crawl. We've taken them to different barbecue places around the city, but in between that, we're going around to different office facilities, industrial facilities, and showing off. I am one of ten from Missouri and Kansas to participate in that. It was a seven hundred and fifty dollar fee that we were paying to do that, but it's a really, really valuable experience. And at least three of these consultants are some of the tops in the world at doing big deals. The Center for Automotive Research is somebody that, is an organization we work closely with because of automotive manufacturing here in Kansas City. I will be going to the management briefing seminar again this year. Nine hundred folks from the automotive OEMs, automotive suppliers are all there. And again, a great way to make contacts for suppliers that many of them are looking to set up operations here in the Kansas City metropolitan area. September 18th, and that's August 2nd through 7th, so that's coming up here pretty soon. The Society of Industrial and Office Realtors is a big event, Kansas City event, September 18th. We participate with Eastern Jackson County Development Alliance, which is Lee Summit, Independence, Blue Springs, Sugar Creek, Grandview. We have a booth at that, and again, another, another event where there will be five or six hundred brokers, developers from the Kansas City area. The, we've had two Green Valley Economic Development Advisory Board meetings. We just had one last week since I last met with you all. Krista and I attend the chamber meetings every month, either if not both of us, at least one of us try to make it to everyone. And we've been pretty close to on track doing that. We've been involved with the Green Valley Master Plan and hope to be here in a couple of weeks when that is presented. And now Krista is going to talk about some of the business retention and media efforts that we've been involved in.
Thanks so much for having us here tonight. I have been busy getting to know your community and reaching out to existing businesses. An important call that I recently went on with Greg was to Sheffers Roofing. Probably aware, Lance Sheffers, who founded that company, is growing rapidly and is interested in potentially expanding or consolidating his operations. He has some concerns and is considering leaving the community. And so, we wanted to get in with him and talk with him about what those specific concerns were and what we might be able to do to serve as a bridge between him and the city. So, we spent a good hour, hour and a half with him out at his facility and heard some concerns he had about consistencies with the development code, feeling that, you know, rules weren't necessarily being applied even handedly and consistently with new projects. He had a variety of different concerns that we listened to. Alexa, we took them to Alexa. She then went and followed up with him. The fruit from that effort is that he's getting more engaged in the community, and he's going to become a member of the Economic Development Advisory Board, which Greg just mentioned meets. And he's also going to be involved in the master plan process. So, I think we boosted his engagement and hoped to, helped re-energize him about Green Valley and about his company's opportunity here in Green Valley. He has, you know, got quite a few concerns about, you know, how the main corridor is being developed, and I think that now that conversation has opened up, and I think he's going to be an ally for the city and an important ally in the business community. Also, had a retention visit with Vicky Digby, the owner of Merivix recently. I'm sure you're all familiar with Merivix, a one hundred and thirty thousand square foot warehouse and distribution facility just north of I-70 here. And she didn't have a lot of complaints about doing business here in the community. She said, of course, she'd like to see more development heading north, past I-70. She's concerned about some of the bottlenecking going on because of some of the roadwork that's been going on, but generally very positive about the business community. Doesn't anticipate any expansion plans. She does have some property there at Duncan and Buckner Tarsoni that she would like to sell and see potentially developed into some kind of a quick trip, gas stations, something like that. But again, very positive, and, you know, we talked about her expansion plans, no immediate plans, I said, as I said, to expand, but very optimistic and no plans to leave Green Valley and wants to see her business grow. Reaching out, in the process of reaching out to Nichols Machine Shop and David Nichols, they're on Greg Street. Would like to get in and talk with him. If you have any other suggestions or anything you hear about companies you would like me to follow up with, I am happy to do that. And I am new to this role, and so I have a lot to learn, so I'm happy to hear any suggestions you might have. Been working with the city on media, helping with news releases and media outreach and media consulting. I know you've had some significant news-related events here within the past week, and also you had the situation with the Green Valley Athletic Association, and helped with that, with the media outreach on that as well, and some of the postings to your website. We are also active on social media, Facebook. You have three hundred and ninety-two likes. We sent the post that we just put up there about affordable homeownership, a very positive story for Green Valley, that you're in the top ten in the state of Missouri when it comes to home ownership affordability. And that post did really well, seventy shares. So, every time a person on social media shares that, it goes out to their entire network, the reach on that, fourteen thousand people. And every time we pay a hundred dollars to boost a post, that's the kind of reach you get. So, some great engagement that we're seeing on social media. And I think that's all I have for now. Thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
Any questions for Krista? Or go back to Greg?
We'll, after we get done.
Okay.
Just a couple of other things.
Sure, roll that, Greg. Can you finish that one?
I wanted to share with you, we talked about this some time ago, and KCADC finally got it done. They do a quarterly newsletter. I gave each one of you, this used to be printed and mailed, and they stopped doing that this year. It now goes out electronically to over two thousand consultants, developers, companies, engineering companies, architectural companies, and it's really a very distinguished list, and Green Valley was the featured community. So, there's only four a year get featured, and we were one here in the second quarter. And so, that's a really big deal for us, and it's a really nice piece to go, it doesn't do it justice that I printed it on kind of crappy paper and on a lousy printer, but it's a really nice piece to go that looks good electronically. So, I wanted to make sure you knew that that got done. And I'll, we'll stop there and answer questions.
Okay. You have any questions?
Like always, I ask you on the Quick Trip at 54th Street, any, any good news, any, anything at all?
No. We still don't have the ingress and egress that Quick Trip requires. And as of now, they still say they would only be on the south side.
South.
Of the highway.
East or west, they don't care, just south side.
The south side. You know, I still think that the corner here on the southeast side is an option for them, but they don't like it. But we're not giving up. I mean, they're, I, you know, I'm working with them on six other projects, and so we keep it open. They're just building a new one there in Independence on the north side of I-70, and so it's getting close to where they're almost saturated. They know that the community really wants one here.
Any, like, 54th Street?
There are a number of those that we're talking, but none of them are at a serious point yet. I think that one of the developers we're working with, that's something that he has in his back pocket that won't tell us. We talk, that's what we keep telling them, that we need an upscale, sit-down restaurant.
Yeah, we really do. Thank you, Mayor.
We keep hitting on them. We absolutely do. We keep hitting on them.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you all again. Really appreciate your time.
Okay, seeing that you've done your discussion, new business or previous business, we'll move on to ordinances.
This is Bill, B-14-H11. It is the second reading. It will be ordinance twenty-three It will be ordinance 2333. It is an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow Aspen Pet Operations to operate a pet cremation facility in the east Kansas City industrial park. Second reading will be ordinance 2333.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill number B-14-11 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2333.
Okay. I have a motion for Alvin Schaefer to approve bill B-14-11 for its second reading, making it ordinance 2333. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Arnold?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Six zero. Will be 14-12. Second reading will be ordinance 2334. And it is an ordinance adopting the 2014 City of Green Valley Employee Handbook. Second reading, ordinance 2334.
I move to accept bill number B-14-12 for a second reading and making it ordinance 2334.
I have a motion for Alvin Scully to accept bill B-14-12 for its second reading, making it ordinance 2334. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Schaefer. Any discussion?
Mayor, Lord, I just wanted to note that the information I provided you with tonight notes the changes that were requested at the first reading regarding the master's degrees. That was added to the language on the petition. That is the only change that's been made since the first reading. So just wanted to note that.
Do you have any questions on any of that?
I have one.
No.
How many people are currently working on their master's degree?
Currently, we have four, according to my understanding.
And what did we decide?
Their grandfather-in-law, I think.
Yeah, their grandfather-in-law. All of this will be starting now, so all of those that are currently on will be grandfather-in-law.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Arnold?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Six zero. Mayor, the next three resolutions are resolution R-14-33, 34, and 35, and they are resolutions to appoint, reappointing in order 33, 34, 35, Hayden Ambrose, Kevin Browning, and Mike Renaud, respectively, reappointing them for a two-year term to the Green Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Resolutions are 14-33, 34, 35.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolutions number R-14-33, R-14-34, R-14-35 is read.
Okay. I have a motion for Alvin Schaefer to approve resolutions R-14-33, R-14-34, and R-14-35. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Scully. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you, the, for these guys to return, because it's hard to get people to volunteer their time to be on these wards.
Seeing nothing else, all unfairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item is city attorney's report.
Yes, Your Honor.
Next item is city minister and staff reports. Any staff having reports?
Yeah, Mayor, just want to remind everybody, August 16th, we're going to be here for a national night out, hoping to see everybody there. It'll be a good time. I don't know if everybody had a chance tonight to get out and look at the police department we had out front here, and if you didn't get a chance, we can make arrangements another time to get you into one, and see, I'll, I'll call you if we have an idea.
Okay.
Real quick, just for information, our fall baseball registration period began today, and we've already had a lot of active interests, both calling in and emails about signing up for fall baseball. And so you all know, we do have a separate website set up right now where people can go and gather more information about the fall baseball program, but also to register as well. And so that's, that's up and running, and at this point, we're still talking with a lot of our citizens, trying to correct some of the misinformation that's been sent out and make sure that they're aware that we're kind of providing quality fall baseball programs. If any of you all ever are approached with anyone that has any questions or concerns, don't hesitate to give them my phone number or have them call me or send me an email. We'll definitely follow up.
Very important. Tim, you said there's a separate website.
Yes.
Could you email it to, send me the link, please? Thank you.
Mayor, Lord, there's two items I'd like to talk about. The first is next Wednesday, from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock, we will be having our employee safety fair, and lunch is provided for all of you that wish to attend, as well as our employees. We have several vendors that will be there, including CJC, as well as CBIZ and NPR. It should be a good time, we have a lot of things set up, and we're really excited about it, and we're also going to be in the Rosa's for lunch, so please come out and join us and let the staff know that you all will be there, and hopefully we'll have a good time. If you have any questions regarding that, let me know.
What was the date again?
The 23rd, Wednesday, the 23rd, next week. Also, we contacted all of you, I believe, regarding our board retreat this weekend. We had a consensus from the board that you all would be involved in the Saturday portion of the retreat, and staff would be in the first and fifth and Friday portion. And I just wanted to let you know that that's the consensus of the board, and so we'll be moving forward in that way, and we'll let our facilitator know, Dave Unock, and if y'all have any questions regarding that, please feel free to contact Alexa. And I believe that's all we have today.
Okay.
Yep.
Where will the retreat be?
The retreat is actually going to be at NPR, and we'll provide all that information to you specifically in an email coming tomorrow. Now that we have the logistics set out, we can give that information to all of you. On the specifics, we'll be serving breakfast, I do know this, from 7:30 to 9 o'clock, and we will have, the meeting begin at 9 o'clock, and it should last until approximately noon. So it shouldn't be too taxing on any of us, I know it's a Saturday, so, but come for a good breakfast, we've got a good one set up for us, and it'll be in NPR, much like we had last year. And any further details will probably come from Dave Unock at the time of the meeting. So if you'd like his contact information, he's more than willing to speak to all of you as he did last year, and I can give that to you if you've mislied it or you need it again, so, you know. I will have.
Okay. Move on, Steve Borbolling reports some comments, Alvin Arnold?
We used to get a report, kind of in a newsletter type, from all the staff about things that would be too detailed to go through at the meeting here, as far as all the water meters that were shut off and had to restart and so forth, and the business going on with the police department and that, as far as traffic violations and assaults and that type of stuff. I haven't seen that for a while, is that something we can get?
We are still getting that information. I know that with the transition here in the administration department, that's kind of been, you know, transitioning period has happened, so we'll definitely get it to you all at the next board meeting, give some information to everybody. I, I'm quite certain that Alexa continues, or wants to continue that, so I'll make sure that she knows that you're interested in it, and that that interaction still.
That's all.
Alvin West?
Nothing.
Alvin Headley?
Nothing this time.
Alvin Scully?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alvin Schaefer?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alvin Johnson?
As alderman of the second ward and the racetrack being in the second, I'd like to be involved somewhat in the negotiation process if I can.
Okay. Uh, next item is mayor's report. I have just one thing to report. I talked to Alexa this morning about this, and we're going to try to, I'm going to call up there tomorrow and try to get this worked out, but there's a track in Knoxville, Iowa that we get a lot of, you know, people saying, hey, why don't you check that one out because it's the middle of town, now the town is built around it. So we're going to try to work on putting together a field trip or a little road trip up there. It's about three hours and 20 minutes away, I think. So we're going to work on that, we might shoot some dates out to you guys and those who are available, you know, we run up there, take a look at it, and talk to, you know, the city, the county, and the people who administer that track, and, you know, see how they do their operation up there, just to give us some ideas about, you know, other tracks, so.
Sound like a good idea, backseat on my motorcycle, be available.
So we will let you know when, I know the guy should be back in the office tomorrow with the contact information I was given, so I'm going to try to call him tomorrow, get some dates from him, and that'll work for them, and we'll take a little road trip up there and take a look at it, so.
She would make an exception to that.
You know what?
I think she would just.
[laughing] Yeah. Uh, that's all I have for mayor's report. Uh, we do have a need for an executive session for legal actions. I don't think anything else, do we? So I'll entertain a motion then to adjourn into executive session. Question from Alvin Arnold, second Alvin Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alvin Arnold?
Yes.
Alvin West?
Yes.
Alvin Headley?
Yes.
Alvin Schaefer?
Yes.
Alvin Johnson?
Yes.
Adjourn executive session.[1797.33]